No, it is totally okay. Everyone, thanks so much for your patience. Good morning. This is a meeting of the Baltimore City Council. The Health, Environment and Technology Committee is now called to order. I am Danielle McCray, Councilwoman representing the 2nd District and Chair of the Committee. In attendance this morning, members of the Committee, we have Councilman Mark Conway, representing the 4th District. We have Councilman Ryan Dorsey, representing the 3rd District. We also have Councilman James Torrance, representing the 7th District. In attendance from the Mayor's Office, we have Nina Themelis. And bear with me, guys, to make my grid a little bit larger. And from the Council President's Office, we have no one at this time, but I'm sure that they will be joining. Also in attendance, we have Matthew Peters, staff to the Committee. Before we get started, just a couple of ground rules. I'm asking that you please stay muted until you are recognized by the Chair that you mute yourself when you are not speaking. Before you speak, please identify yourself, the agency or organization you are with, and your position. Please speak slowly and clearly. After you are finished speaking, please mute yourself again until you are recognized by the Chair. We ask that Committee members and city agency officials keep their video on for the duration of the hearing, unless there are technical difficulties preventing you from doing so. The Committee has two items on the agenda today. First, a work session where we convene a Resolution 21-0003-R informational hearing, Baltimore's COVID-19 vaccination plan. And then a hearing on Resolution 21-0070-R informational hearing, sole conservation in Baltimore City. We are going to start with Resolution 21-0003-R for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Health Department, Baltimore's healthcare community, and other interested parties before the Baltimore City Council to discuss Baltimore's COVID-19 vaccination plan. The Committee held a hearing on this resolution on January 27, 2021, and a follow-up work session on June 16. Today, we will hear an update from our Health Department on our progress vaccinating Baltimore City residents, and then give Committee members the opportunity to ask questions. We are joined by our Health Commissioner, Dr. Letitia DeRosa. And I believe that you have a presentation this morning.
Thank you, Chair. I do. Let me go ahead and share my screen. Can everyone see my screen okay? All right. Well, again, good morning, everybody, and thank you, Chair McCray, as well as other Councilmembers for this opportunity to provide updates for this group. So, beginning with our typical disclaimer slide, the data being presented is up-to-date as of November 7. I will be providing a general update on COVID vaccinations here in Baltimore City. And more specifically, I'll be reviewing our booster doses and how we're doing there, as well as pediatric vaccination updates. I'll also be discussing our vaccination-at-home program and efforts towards provider outreach. So let's begin with our general COVID vaccine updates. I'd like to start with just a general refresher of our overarching goal and benchmarks. So we set the goal earlier this year to vaccinate 80% of Baltimore City residents by February 2022. We created subsequent benchmarks that would help us reach that goal. And the next benchmark is 60% of the population being vaccinated by this November. And we're currently on track. With the most recent approval of vaccines for our 5- to 11-year-old population in the past two weeks, we created a separate timeline for this group. I do want to say, though, that that 60% of vaccinations having occurred in city residents is inclusive of all age groups, even those that are not yet eligible. So as of November 8, getting a bit more specific, 73.7% of all residents 18 and up have received a first or a single dose of vaccine. 70% of those 12 and up have received a first or a single dose of vaccine, while all city residents, so 62.4% of all city residents, have received a first or a single dose. And again, this number is inclusive of our newly eligible population and the 5- to 11-year-old group, as well as children under 5 that are not yet eligible, and any individuals who have medical conditions or things that preclude them from getting vaccinated. This here is just a general snapshot of our vaccination dashboard, which we update daily. This particular graph represents the cumulative number of residents here in Baltimore City that have received a vaccination, with the blue line indicating a first or a single dose, while the yellow line represents residents in the fully vaccinated category. As you can see, we continue to see upward trends. And even over the past three months, we have seen this upward slope, which is encouraging. This particular map, which can also be found on our general vaccination dashboard, depicts vaccination coverage at the CSA level, with the darkest green representing the highest vaccination coverage areas and the darkest purple representing the lowest vaccination coverage areas. Again, those percentages are percentages of the entire population, so inclusive of newly eligible groups, as well as ineligible groups. And the red and white syringe icon represents weekly health department-supported vaccination clinics. To date, we have had over 1,100 health department-supported or involved COVID-19 vaccination clinics and have provided almost 34,000 vaccines across these clinics. As I mentioned a while back, we are on track to meet that goal of vaccinating 80% of residents here in Baltimore City against COVID-19 by this February. But disparities remain in vaccination coverage, especially among younger people, such as those in Gen Z or millennials and African Americans. So currently, as a whole, the city needs to vaccinate an additional 234 12- to 17-year-olds a week to help with reaching this goal, and an additional 734 18- to 34-year-olds a week, as well as an additional 2,800 African Americans per week. The Health Department continues to provide access to vaccine, especially focused on our low vaccination coverage areas. We prioritize messaging and outreach to those communities that we know have been harder to reach or are asking for additional information. We do this in conjunction with our community partners and grassroots organizations that are trusted messengers, especially with younger populations and with our African American population. So shifting gears a bit to talk about boosters. Boosters are now available for select populations. For clarity, a booster is an additional dose of a vaccine given to someone who was previously vaccinated and built some level of protection after that vaccine or vaccination series. However, over time, that vaccination protection has decreased. It is normal to see decreased protection, or what is also known as waning immunity, over time. In this instance, review of the data suggested that, over time, there is decreased protection against mild and moderate COVID-19 infections in those that were once fully vaccinated. Therefore, the CDC has recommended boosters for certain populations six months after completing the primary series with an mRNA vaccine, namely our Pfizer and Moderna vaccines. Or for J&amp;J, the recommendation is for a booster dose at least two months after completion of that vaccination series. For the purposes of booster doses only, you can mix and match vaccines. So who exactly can receive a booster? If you've had Moderna or Pfizer and you meet the following criteria, you should receive a vaccine. These are individuals that are 65 and up, that are living in long-term care settings, adults that are 50 to 64 with underlying medical conditions, such as cancer, chronic kidney disease, chronic lung disease, dementia, high blood pressure, HIV, have a weakened immune system, liver disease, sickle cell disease, those that are smokers or have had organ or blood transplant, strokes, or a history of substance use disorder. If you've had Moderna or Pfizer and you meet the criteria that I will outline in a moment, you may receive a booster. So again, that category I just mentioned, you should receive a booster. It is optional if you fall into the next category, which are adults 18 to 49 with certain underlying medical conditions, the same ones I just mentioned, and adults 18 to 49 who are working or living in settings that increase your risk of COVID-19 exposure. So this could be our first responders or those working in healthcare, those that are supporting education, food and agricultural workers, grocery store workers, manufacturing workers, corrections officers, as well as those working in the U.S. Postal Service. So when we think about Johnson &amp; Johnson, it's a little bit different. So again, Johnson &amp; Johnson was that one-dose vaccine, and it used slightly different technology. So any adult 18 and up should receive a booster if you have the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. As I mentioned before, you can select which booster dose you get, whether it's the Moderna, Pfizer, or J&amp;J, really any of the vaccines that are approved for use here in the United States. So currently, booster doses are relatively widely available at many of our Health Department community clinics that we're hosting. Additionally, after surveying senior housing sites, many of which we vaccinated in late winter, early spring, we will be returning to provide boosters. And in some instances, we'll also be offering the flu vaccine. So now on to pediatric vaccine updates. As background, while COVID-19 has largely been talked about as the disease of mostly older adults or those with underlying health conditions, we're seeing the burden of disease shift to children. So since September 2021, for the first time ever during the pandemic, children under 10 made up about 20% of Baltimore City's new cases. So as we're seeing COVID shift, you know, the reality is, we just want to remind people that children do get COVID, unfortunately. And to date, 6.4 million children in the U.S. have tested positive. Children can also die from COVID. And so far, we've seen 176 deaths attributable to COVID in the 5- to 11-year-old age groups across the U.S. So with a vaccine, these deaths are preventable. Additionally, children can experience severe outcomes from COVID-19, so long COVID, as well as something called multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children, can occur in those children, more likely those with underlying health conditions if they were to get COVID. And we know that vaccines can help prevent these conditions. So in early November, the CDC authorized the use of Pfizer vaccine in children ages 5 to 11. This vaccine, similar to the adult version, is given in two doses, three weeks apart. And it's noted to be more than 90% effective in children in this age group. The dose for children is about a third of the dose for adults. Like adults, children can experience side effects after getting the vaccine, including fever, pains, swelling or redness at the injection site, muscle aches, joint pain, fatigue, and lymph node swelling. These side effects may last anywhere from one to two days. Myocarditis, or inflammation of the heart muscle, is a rare uncommon adverse event after vaccination with Moderna or Pfizer that was previously seen mostly in young adolescent boys between the ages of 12 to 30, so young men as well. No pediatric study participants developed myocarditis. If parents have additional questions, they should absolutely talk with their clinical provider to learn more about the benefits of the vaccine. So based on the evidence, we recommend children between the ages of 5 to 11 get vaccinated. We know that vaccinations can protect children from disease, death, and many of the severe long-term effects that COVID can have. We also know that vaccines help us to keep children safely in school. So vaccinated children reduce the spread of COVID-19 in schools, as well as amongst their family and within the community, which makes schools and the community safer overall. So our strategy for vaccinating 5- to 11-year-olds really builds upon our strategy for vaccinating adolescents that were in the 12- to 17-year-old age group. From May 14, so around the time when vaccines were approved for 12- to 17-year-olds, up through November 2, the Health Department, along with partners, have held 140 clinics at 51 different school locations to support vaccinating our adolescent population. Similar to the goal we had for all residents of 80% being vaccinated, we likewise set a goal for 80% of our 5- to 11-year-olds being vaccinated by September 2022. And the timeline to reach this goal, again, very closely mimics the timeline to reaching adult or 80% of the adult population or full population being vaccinated. So as background, we are essentially dividing the city into quadrants and then subdividing those quadrants into the lowest vaccination coverage areas. For our school-based location, the Health Department prioritizes elementary, middle, and high schools in the lowest vaccination areas to be a recurring vaccination site. And we have geographically spread these sites across the city. The recurring sites function as a vaccine hub for their surrounding neighborhood schools. We work closely with city schools to identify those schools which we think would serve best. City schools communicates with schools that have been selected, that communicate with parents to indicate that their school has been identified as a vaccination hub. For our non-school sites, so many of the recurring clinics that we perform each week, we will be expanding and have expanded vaccine availability at those particular sites to include the pediatric vaccine. So for both city school and non-school-based sites, the vax amount is going to be determined in part by our community partners that are supporting, as well as any schools, if they have the anticipated number of children which they think will want to get vaccine. Parents can also register online, or though it's not required, and that will help us to determine, you know, any additional need. Additionally, we have established a pediatric vaccine transfer program. So interested providers can self-enroll into the program, and they're able to request how much vaccine they will need for their particular patient population. We don't necessarily determine their allocated vaccine amount. However, there are factors that go into the decision. Specifically, what was our particular amount received that week? What is that clinic's ability to store and handle the vaccine? Can they electronically report vaccinations back to the state? Which serves as the ultimate... Can they report that back to the state, which serves as the ultimate record keeper of vaccinations? What is the patient demand and number of eligible children within that particular practice? Lastly, we're also providing pediatric vaccinations at home through our Vax-at-Home program for children and caregivers that have limited mobility. In addition to our sites, many pharmacies are also offering vaccines to children across the city. So for more information on which pharmacies are offering vaccines, you can go to coronavirus.maryland.gov and use their Vaccine Finder tool and drill down to 5- to 11-year-olds, and they will provide you with the list of pharmacies offering vaccine across the city. I am excited to report that the first health department-supported vaccination clinic was held this past Saturday at the Baltimore City Convention Center Field Hospital in conjunction with Five Medicine and the University of Maryland Medical System. And we were able to vaccinate 200 children. Through November 8, so again, not inclusive of data passed the 8, 1,062 first doses have been given to 5- to 11-year-olds in Baltimore City, which equates to 2.3% of that population. And in the coming days, we will be updating our current dashboard to reflect the specific data for 5- to 11-year-olds. We currently have some information for 12 to 17, but we will be adding 5- to 11 as well. For the week of November 8, so this week, the Health Department has nine pediatric-specific vaccination clinics throughout the city. And next week, we'll plan to have 11. As we see supply increase, we will also see expansion of clinics across the city. So as with teen and adolescent vaccinations, we understand that hesitancy in this group will serve as a barrier. So we have also employed a very specific pediatric communication strategy to reach this population and their families. This includes mobilizing city schools and partners, working with children and adolescents to educate the staff, parents, and students about COVID and vaccinations. Additionally, we're working with pediatric and family practice providers to ensure a consistent and streamlined message about vaccinations that they can provide to parents and caregivers. The Family League has been recruited as a partner to help with mobilizing vaccination efforts at our community schools. We've also hired 18 youth ambassadors working in city schools and neighborhoods to encourage our teen vaccination. And in the upcoming weeks, we'll be holding parent listening sessions and recruiting parent ambassadors. What we also know about this population in particular is that they trust their child's regular clinical provider. According to a survey performed by the CDC, more than 62% of parents surveyed said they trust their regular doctor's office or clinic to vaccinate their child. Therefore, as I've mentioned, we have also implemented a provider outreach strategy and our pediatric vaccine transfer program. In August and September, we identified pediatric and family practice providers that might be interested in providing pediatric Pfizer vaccine. So providers in about 70 clinics were identified. Of those clinics, 36 providers plan to become Pfizer pediatric vaccine providers. We currently transfer vaccine to 11 pediatric family practice providers who were unable to get direct vaccine directly from the Maryland Department of Health. As demand and supply increases, again, we expect to see this provider population grow. And practices are also able, depending on the number of their requests, some practices will also go directly to the Maryland Department of Health and be able to get direct vaccine allocations. So diving a bit deeper into our provider outreach work. As mentioned, direct clinical providers really are a crucial component to vaccinating children. Therefore, we have a number of tools at the disposal of our providers. The Health Department, along with Johns Hopkins and Geppetto, send out monthly newsletters to providers across the city regarding all things COVID, including the importance of vaccination. This newsletter reaches about 1,700 providers. And we've developed provider materials and toolkits for providers and clients to help tackle provider and client vaccine hesitancy. Resources from the provider toolkit are available in both digital and print formats. This is just an example of a comic that was developed to assist providers with addressing vaccine hesitancy. I do want to very briefly discuss our homebound vaccination program, which remains an important resource for those that are homebound or have limited mobility. This work, as always, is a multi-partner effort and includes support from the Baltimore City Fire Department, of course, alone, LifeBridge, Lutherville Pharmacy, the National Guard, and the University of Maryland Medical System. To date, our teams have administered over 1,000 vaccines to homebound individuals, as well as their caregivers. And as a reminder, folks can self-prefer through our call center, or they can register online through the State's No Arm Left Behind program. We have also partnered with Civic Works to locate homebound individuals not connected to services. I don't have the number of our call center on here, but I will share it in the chat. And very briefly, if you want to refer in, if you want to call in and get referred, it's 443-984-8650. In closing, I do want to quickly review where you can get vaccinated in Baltimore City. As a reminder, we post a weekly schedule of all city-supported vaccination events on our website. And this is that schedule here. Starting this past Saturday, as I mentioned, we began vaccinating children ages 5 to 11. Clinics that are able to provide vaccine in this age group are going to be delineated by the child icon that you see on this graphic. And I know this is a lot of information. So again, our website, coronavirus.baltimorecity.gov, to access this schedule. As I mentioned, there are also pharmacies providing vaccines to children 5 and up. So you can go to coronavirus.maryland.gov and check Vaccine Finder to understand which pharmacies are providing vaccines across the city. As mentioned, there are about 11 pediatric vaccination clinics planned for this week. And I previously misstated, there are actually 14 pediatric vaccine clinics planned for next week. So we will be supporting an estimated 1,700 first doses. In addition, we've received some requests from about 10 pediatric and family medicine providers for a total of 1,150 doses. So we will continue to serve as a resource for both pediatric and adult vaccines, with a particular focus on providing equitable access and accurate, up-to-date information for the residents here in Baltimore City. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. DeRosa. I will say this, a lot of the information that I needed was covered within your presentation. So I definitely just thank you and your team for being so prepared within this presentation. We appreciate it. I'm going to open a floor to Committee members for questions. Committee members, please signal or use the raise hand function if you have a question for the Health Department. I'm going to go ahead and start with my very first question. And you briefly mentioned it when you spoke about how on 11/6, we were able to vaccinate 200 children between the ages of 5 to 11 at the Baltimore Convention Center Field Hospital. We don't have numbers on, right now, and within the presentation, on how many additional first doses we need per week say to get those kids to 80%. But is the 200 amount, does that show that there's a high demand for appointments for the vaccine for our population between 5 to 11?
That's a good question. You know, what we believe is that, very similar to when vaccines first opened up for adults, there's going to be an initial rush. And I will say, you know, the supply is still relatively limited. You know, I'll say relatively limited. So in the beginning, we believed that there's going to be a rush. So that 200 represented every single dose that was available. So I think what we'll see is that, like we had in the beginning with adults, many adults who were interested and had been waiting, they're going to be the first ones to get vaccinated. Those are going to be the first children to get vaccinated, whether it's at our site, through a pharmacy, or through their provider. And over time, as we've seen with adults, there will be a trickling off, which really stresses the importance of this ongoing outreach and messaging to this population and their families to continue to talk about the importance of vaccination. So, you know, right now, I think, again, there's a demand for a group that has been kind of waiting. But over time, we will likely begin to see that demand lessen. And that will be, you know, the groundwork of, you know, doing the outreach, doing the canvassing. The good thing is, we've already established a lot of methodology and some best practices based on what we've done for adults and even our 12- to 17-year-old age group, our adolescents.
The follow-up question to that, and you hit on it a bit through the presentation, about what the city's plan is to vaccinate the population of 5 to 11 years old. The field center is open from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Are we looking at expanding those hours? I'm just thinking about families getting there, especially if kids are in school during that period. So would we be expanding those hours? Or hasn't it been something you guys have been thinking about?
Yeah, that's a great question. Now, if you look at our schedule, across the city, there's variable hours. And we really have a concentration of Friday and Saturday clinics as well. And so we will be doing some after-hours. The Baltimore City Convention Center Field Hospital is kind of a joint effort. And it's a state asset that is run by our partners, University of Maryland and Johns Hopkins. And so, you know, I think in time, they're looking to do that. But, you know, where we have a bit more flexibility are on the clinics that we're supporting throughout the week, which, again, many of those are already offering weekend and after-hours right now.
Thank you. I'm just going to get into my second question. It has to do with boosters. And I just want to, just for the record, I did get a booster recently. I did get the Pfizer booster. Of course, I did receive the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccination earlier this year. But after my research, I decided to get the Pfizer booster because I was eligible to do so. For anyone who needs to watch this later on, anyone who's viewing now from the public, can you just speak about the effectiveness of boosters in protecting people from infection and severe symptoms?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I guess just to start by saying, you know, in reference, essentially, the reason why I think we were kind of waiting with bated breath for boosters to be approved is because we were collecting additional data. So from the time that individuals first got, whether it was Pfizer, and Pfizer, you know, one of the reasons why it was one of the first ones approved is because its clinical trials were completed earlier. And so there was a longer period of time to collect the data. But what they saw is that, over time, even though in the beginning it was, you know, relatively effective, 90-plus% effective, that immunity, that effectiveness tended to decrease. With getting the booster, it does help to bring, again, that effectiveness back up to, you know, the 88% to 90% effectiveness in terms of your protection. So congrats on getting your booster. They really do help enhance that immune response.
Thank you. Are there any other Councilmembers at this time who have questions for the Health Department? Councilman Conway?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Director DeRosa, I want to really commend you for the work you guys have been doing. You've been very clear about our capability and the rollout for vote testing and vaccines. So just really want to commend you and your team for the excellent work you're doing. I was really curious, of course, with the vaccine now being approved for 5 and up, how are we working and coordinating with schools?
Yeah, that's a great question. I touched on it very briefly. So, you know, one, I actually meet with city schools leadership once a week. And we spend time reviewing the data and talking about vaccinations, for example, among that age group. But for months now, we have been working with city schools in this instance to help with identifying appropriate locations. And so we have the data, obviously, around lowest vaccination coverage areas. But they're the experts in understanding, you know, which school would be the best hub because of administrative support, because of parents... because of parents supported a particular school. And so they've really helped us, once we narrowed down to particular regions, identify, you know, the best school partners as well as share messaging around upcoming vaccination events. So, you know, have has really been a partnership, I think, even with the success of our adolescent vaccine clinics that we started back in May, really looking to city schools as the experts on, you know, locations, knowing we, you know, could not go to every school, but what schools would really serve as as that 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 central hub or a focus point for the for the neighborhood and surrounding community.
I appreciate that. And I I think, of course, there's the that, and you you did touch on this a little bit in your presentation, but the the added information for parents to 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 make that decision for their children. I know we we had, we we're still dealing with one barrier with folks who are refusing to get vaccinated or don't feel comfortable for whatever reason. They're still coming to those decisions. And I think you're going to see a little bit tighter of a restriction around parents making that decision for their children, where parents may have gotten vaccinated but are, may decide to to slow down or wait for their children. Just kind of curious how we're thinking about that and properly educating folks about the the risk, the opportunity. You did touch on it a little bit, but just want to give you an opportunity to elaborate if you want.
Yeah, no, I I completely agree. I mean, and anecdotally, I'm a pediatrician and and, you know, talking to many of my colleagues have heard that, right? Like even even parents who work in medicine or healthcare and and kind of willingly signed up to be one of the first to get the vaccine, you know, are, they may pause a bit more when when you think about your child, which I, which I also understand as a parent. You know, at the same time, I think, as with, you know, adult vaccination, we have the obligation to share the information. We will continue to use trusted messengers, so that's not always us. But but per the survey, oftentimes it's that child's clinical provider. And so that's why we really want to kind of leverage the reach that pediatric and family practice providers have because they are often a trusted voice, especially for, again, the younger child. They're often that trusted voice. Additionally, I mentioned parent ambassadors. So as we're performing focus groups to understand hesitation and reservation, we will be employing and hiring parent ambassadors. We've also discussed engaging grandparents, again, who are often that that trusted voice more so than than the health department or a government entity.
Awesome. Thank you again and appreciate all the work you're doing. If there's anything that that me and my team can do to help, of course, I'm here and happy to help out. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Looking to see if we have any other questions for other council members. At this time, I don't see any. So Dr. DeBrasa, I just have one additional question. And just want to know how we're combating disinformation about the vaccines that are coming from social media and spreading within our communities, especially some of our communities that we really need to make sure are vaccinated. How is the health department handling that?
Yeah, that's a great question. You know, one of the things that we've we've done, whenever we see disinformation or misinformation, we will often develop a social media response around that particular item, right? And so, you know, many of our our social media campaigns, I think people, people have laughed and they've liked the memes, but they have often come directly from misinformation or disinformation that we knew was floating in the community or that we knew was floating around online. Like those responses have have kind of been geared towards addressing, addressing those things. And so that is often our our response, that kind of that that reactive, quickly reactive response to try to address that. We also see focus groups and town halls as a way to address that for other populations. It really depends on kind of where you seek your information. And so we we do that as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the update. We thank you for your leadership. We appreciate your team and I do see Dr. McDowell as well. So just know that we appreciate you on the Baltimore City Council. We're going to go ahead and recess. They're with me just a few moments, guys. And we're going to go ahead and put this resolution in recess. We're likely going to hold an additional work session in the coming months just to keep the community informed about vaccination efforts and progress in the city. Before we hear our next bill, we will be taking a brief three-minute recess in between. Thank you all for joining us for this hearing.